I FaceTimed me.
Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, April 1st, 2019. Please stand and join us for the vote of Ouija. Larry, can you do the honors?
May I put Ouija to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which stands, "One Nation, Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Good evening and welcome. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by W R P S for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on-demand viewing at W R P S Rockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently recorded meetings and community events. Please go to W R P S Rockland.com for further information. First item on our agenda is actually going to be canceled tonight. There's an issue with scheduling for the recognition of the Rockland Highway Department and the Mighty McQueen Truck Parade. So we'll move on to the next item. Doug, should I do another community announcement?
I do it one. The Rockland Firefighters Open House will be on Saturday, October 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I'm just going to read from the flyer a little bit for the public. It says, "Stop by and meet your firefighters, learn how to use a fire extinguisher, see some live skills demonstrations," which looks like it's the Jaws of Life, "fill the boot, Domino's Pizza, fire safety activities, et cetera." So that's Saturday, October 5th, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. at the fire station.
Normally that requires a road closing from that time. Usually it's 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. would be on the side street, which is a street right next to the fire station, Pacific Street, because they do the Jaws of Life and everything in that particular area. And they've also raised a ladder, so that I would just check with them to make sure that that's -- because usually we vote that to close the road for that on every year. We have in the past, anyway, so I would just make a motion that we approve the event subject to the road closing and that the police chief and whatever still agree with that. I'm not sure they do, but I'm sure that I will hear if they don't. You know what I mean? This is my wife who works for the fire department. I would just check with that.
So is that a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve this event with the possible road closing.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. But can you just reach out to Scott?
I will. I'll take John. Yes, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, open session minutes for September 17, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the open session minutes of September 17, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
One step.
Okay, I have the executive session minutes for September 17, 2019.
To approve, to approve not to release any matters, to allow matters to settle.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Notice how I didn't do that, Mike? That's always the tongue twister.
All right, moving on. Item number four, the Rockland Holiday Stroll Request. Pam Murphy and Dan Beggins.
Hello.
Very first, the citizen need cancel.
Yeah.
It's working up.
Impressive.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right.
Well, we're here for the Holiday Stroll, which will be November 30th from 4:00 to 7:00 throughout Rockland Center. The North Pole, it starts at the North Pole, which is McGowan-Beggins' funeral home, but not that night. And then it proceeds up to the community center. Everybody, as far as the Police-Fire-Highway Act, are all on board already. The only thing we really want from the selectmen besides their blessing is every single year we use this room for the Crazy Critters. And...
So do you want us here? Maybe person 30.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Here we are.
So this had come up a little while back and, you know, I think I mentioned to you, Pam, that I talked to a couple of other members and if anything needs to be, you know, cleaned up or the building needs to be secured at the end of the night, that I'd be willing to take care of it. I think, Larry...
I'll be around too. I can't be the, I can no longer be the fire marshal.
Yeah, but your kids are taking over that.
Yeah, they're taking care of that. I'm going to be free to wheel and deal wherever I'm needed.
As long as your harbor master duties are ten to two, I think we'll be safe.
Fortunately, that's not...
I'll be around as well.
Just a couple of things. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for having us here today. On behalf of everyone at the North Pole up the street, we wanted to thank you all for all the work you put in, for all the time, for everybody here in Rockland, all the volunteer hours, not only here at your meetings, but behind the scenes. I talked to Santa a little earlier today to confirm for the stroll, and he wanted you all to know that he's taken note and he's going to be sure that you all are treated very generously this Christmas. And he wanted to thank you for your support every year on the stroll. It really has become really, I think, not only one of, but really the quintessential event for the town of Rockland throughout the calendar year. Really, everybody who's everybody in Rockland, whether it be businesses, the schools, the town opening up the town hall for us to let the kids come in to see the reptile show, businesses, you know, youth events, Cub Scouts, sports, really, it really is just an all-encompassing great Rockland day, aside from really getting us into the Christmas spirit and seeing really all the hope and dreams of Christmas coming up in all the Rockland kids' eyes. So thank you for your continued support of this event, and it's great to be a part of. And I'm going to say it because I know she won't say it herself, but this lady sitting next to me right here is the reason why it happens. The stroll exists because of Pam Murphy and because of Rockland friends, and she's put in hours and hours and hours and years of tireless work. How many years now, Pam?
Over 25.
Over 25 years. I think that's pretty remarkable.
Yeah.
Seems like only yesterday.
Any new additions to this?
We're looking, you know, we're currently looking. Children's entertainment is what is our big thing. We are looking for, I think someone has a connection to the Masons to get the kids fingerprinted and, because we've done that in the past, but we haven't in a few years, the picture IDs and the fingerprinting on that little folder for all the parents to keep. So, you know, we're looking for, we're talking to DJs now. Crazy Critters and the Hayride are booked in August, and we really don't even have to book them, they just will show up here anyway. So it's, they just, they love it. So Hayride says doing the Rockland is his best gig all year, so that's pretty cool.
And there's a lot of moving parts to the day, you know, between town departments that really step right up and, you know, Pam's overseeing the whole thing for so long, but now it's really become so turnkey. Everybody who's been a part of this, whether it be police or fire or highway or park, everyone steps right up and, you know, knows their part, and it just, it's amazing how it just all comes together and it just happens. Christmas magic, I guess.
Yes, I have one question. When we have everybody here, I have never been up at town hall, is the whole floor open? Is the whole building open? Is the back door locked? And they only come in through the front?
They come in through the front.
And what about the back corridors? Are there any kind of barricade to shut them off or anything?
Typically, the offices are locked, and then the doors, the door to the stairwell has to be open as a mode of egress, but the door coming back into the downstairs is locked. So they can get out of the building and they can use the bathrooms, but they can't get into any offices besides this.
Yeah, they do usually look this floor because it's cold outside. They want to get in as soon as they can.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to have an idea so when they, you know, if I'm going to be down there, I want to make sure I don't overstep or understep.
Another misconception is, all these animals, there's a lot of people that come with this company. They're all family and friends, and they're all in glass cages and stuff until a kid says, "Can I hold that?" "Oh, that, I won't say what," because everybody freak out. And then a person does it with the kid, gets the pictures taken.
And they never left behind.
No, they've never left it. They've never left the critters. And the other point that I wanted to make is, we could not do this without police, fire, park, highway. If we hadn't had us start coming with money to pay for all that, there wouldn't be a Holiday Stroll. And all the chiefs, Peter Park and Dave Taylor, oh, God, I forgot that. But they, like Danny said, they just know what to do and they do it.
Right.
You know, so thank God, because they make it happen too, so they should be thanked as well. So if you come up, if anybody comes up with any ideas, it's easy to track us down. We have a site on Facebook, Rockland's Annual Holiday Stroll. You can call Danny at the North Pole. You can call me at home. So, but any questions or...
If you need help getting in touch with anyone about the fingerprinting, I'm happy to reach out to Plymouth County Sheriff's Office.
Does it too?
Yeah.
Yeah, because someone already offered to make us the pamphlets if they weren't available, but...
Yeah, Plymouth County, they'll come and do everything right there for you, so I'm happy to reach out.
That'd be great. Thank you, Ms. Diamond. That'd be great.
Do they know it's a lot of kids?
There you start.
You're going to be working that table?
No.
Okay.
I'll be doing clam chowder with you.
Yeah, I'm not allowed. I guess I got a heavy pour. They didn't quite reach the thousand cups last year, so they were like 9.95.
Would you be able to join us at the North Pole?
And they blamed that on us.
You know, I'm not sure my son's going to be coming home from college for the first time from far away, so I'm not sure.
We'll be sure to share plenty of pictures. Thank you.
There you go.
Anybody have any further questions?
I just have, oh, one thing. Everyone, all Dan and Pam were talking about the department heads and everything else, but I think also notable this, oh, this year was a few weeks ago, was the fact that our Dan and Pam, I both sat down with Doug and Jen and really gave them an overview, like a bird's eye view overview, and I can share with them all the details and the moving parts of the event. I, you know, all of us take the Holiday Stroll for granted because we've lived it, we've participated in it, we've, like in all our departments, as I mentioned, really, like, I mean, really, it's an event that just runs itself, but, you know, with the fact that they went to Doug and Jen and, oh, you know, oh, made sure that, you know, they were, oh, that Doug and Jen were comfortable with what all of our departments were doing, I think, was an important introduction to the stroll and hopefully, like even like a stronger foundation with the town for other years to come, so that's...
And thank you to Doug and Jen too for, you know, meeting with us and listening. I know for someone who's hearing about all this for the first time, coming in and talking about bringing reptiles into town hall, that's maybe take you back a little bit, but thank you for understanding. It is a unique event, but it is, it's really great, and we're happy to keep doing it.
Awesome. And I have another one this year, so I won't be able to attend. I'm not getting mad again, once was enough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, next on the agenda, one-day liquor license, Trinity Episcopal Church, 3 Garderav.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is Karen Bond on behalf of Trinity Episcopal Church. I believe this is our fifth consecutive year of asking for this license, and you've been very generous in the past to allow this. It's a very important fundraiser for our church. We're right across the street, obviously, but this is a very unique event. It's a traditional wine tasting with food pairings that's all prepared locally with the members of the church. It's, tickets are required in advance, they're $40 per person, but it's a limited seating and it's a limited capacity pour, so it's not like your traditional walk into a liquor store and have, you know, unlimited resources. It's been very successful for us and very important, so we really appreciate the selectmen's support in the past and request this again this year.
Anyone have any questions?
Oh, they've already done a good job down there, and they say their tip sting will be serviced against...
Yes, actually, I just spoke with her, and she is renewing it, and she'll just send me a copy of her certificate, and I'll get that right into Ms. Hyde.
Beautiful. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All paperwork looks like it's in order. Any further questions?
I have a minute.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Have a good event. Hope it went well as always.
Thank you.
I have to...
All right, next on the agenda, parking clerk designation. Mr. Lapp.
Thank you. So as I believe that the board knows, you had previously designated an individual to be the parking clerk who was working in the collector's office here in town hall. That person now has a new role in the town. She's working over at the sewer department. So in looking at the situation, we really don't think it would provide the best customer service to have the parking clerk located at the sewer department. People come to town hall, they expect to go to the collector's office window. So we've had discussions with that individual and with the department head, with Judy Hartigan, the tax collector. What we think would make the most sense to provide the most flexibility is to not designate an individual person to fill that role, but rather the position or positions that would fill that role, and we think it makes the most sense to keep it in the collector's office. So what we're proposing tonight is for you to designate staff, plural, all the staff at the collector's office as parking clerks. And our expectation is that it would mostly be the two, the person at the window and the assistant collector that would most likely do, you know, 99% of that work, but certainly Judy, the collector, will also be trained, so they'll all be cross-trained and can all fill in. There was a stipend associated with it for that one individual, so obviously that stipend will have to, you know, come back, and I think the expectation would be that we would split that stipend between the two union personnel and then basically, and I've had this discussion with Judy, you know, look and see how it goes. If the collector is actually doing a ton of that work, we can talk about her salary because she's not in the union, we don't need to worry about the stipend, you know, with her. But we think the most equitable thing would be to split it with the other two union personnel so they can both be cross-trained, try to be effective and efficient.
Would it be advantageous to stick the financial thing with the office or stick the actual parking clerk's thing with the office and not the individual, so that we say...
With the positions. Yeah, with those two positions in the office, not for the individual people, because they might move around in the future.
Yeah, we have it written down someplace, so again, that'll be something that's going to be in the chart, and we'll have to make sure all these things are spelled out somewhere.
So if there was a motion to be made, I think it would be to move the parking clerk designation to...
From an individual to a staff.
From an individual to two staff positions within the collector's office.
Don't move. Okay, go ahead. You haven't been around for a while.
No, that's okay. I'll make that motion. I've been silent for a little bit. Unusual.
Crazy. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thanks, Doug. All right, so next on the agenda, it reads as Charter Review Committee Interviews, but I'm not sure if interviews would necessarily be appropriate, seeing as I think we've only got one person present that applied for the charter review. So I think maybe somebody wants to just go through the names of who the people are. I think we have three spots open, and I think more importantly is we need to look at appointing two members to the Charter, Charter Maintenance Committee and one to the Charter Review Committee. So I think we decide, we make that decision, who the two that go to the Maintenance Committee are, and then who goes on to the Board of Selectmen Ad Hoc Committee.
So I, just my instincts, because the Charter Maintenance Committee, as I understand, as I understand it, will continue even after the Charter Review process concludes. Just my personal opinion, I want to, I would feel comfortable going with people who, frankly, like I know and who I would bring credibility to that role into the future. So my hunch would be to appoint Jared Valenzola, like and Pierce McNally, as standing members to the Charter Maintenance. And then we have a third application for the third spot from Greg Kelly from French Road, and I think it's amazing that he has an interest and wants to serve and appoint him to the, as our ad hoc representative. That's my just initial thought. I'm not sure if anyone else has.
So what about, so my thought on this is, while we do have three members of the Charter Maintenance and then six members on the newly appointed committee, they're going to be working in tandem on the new charter. My thought on this is, do we appoint these three individuals for one year, which then would allow them all to participate in this, and then we look a year from now, because there may be, there may be some members in here that truly want to continue, and there may be some members that are like, hey, you know what, I want to get this charter done and not instead of, instead of...
Oh, I understand.
Because, I mean, Mr. Valenzola is here, and he could speak for himself on that if he would want to be on the maintenance or the other, but the other individuals aren't. So I'd hate to appoint someone and then find out that they may not want to be long-term? I don't know.
Well, I guess my other question might be, is there any specific language in the current charter which states that the makeup of the Charter Maintenance Committee is a specific length of term?
Properly?
Three years, right?
Is it a three?
Mr. Valenzola, come down front, please. You trust that table?
I quite do, just for you, Mr. Chairman. Jared Valenzola, 112 Webster Street. For historical context, I was on the previous committee. The original committee was a Charter Maintenance Committee that was, I think, five members for three years. We, to the best of my understanding, scrapped that and rewrote the charter to establish the Charter Bylaw Study and Review Committee of seven members for seven years. That's the last understanding I have of what the charter reads for a specific charter committee being established. Obviously, the Board of Selectmen, you create ad hoc committees all the time, so I can't speak to that. In terms of the one-year idea, I'll just speak personally, not on behalf of anybody else but myself. I think my experience on the first incarnation of this committee, there were some folks who had a different idea of what the purpose of the charter committee was, there were other folks who maybe wanted to go in different directions. I know that the town's made an investment in having a consultant come in, and it might be best to give a year for folks to really figure out, A, what is, what is the goal? What is the main purpose? What are we going to ultimately look to accomplish with the charter? And then if folks feel as if they're not in step or in line with what the majority is, they can fall off or they can stay on and try and work within that group. Because I think that there's a lot of misconceptions on what a charter does and doesn't do and what a charter is supposed to do, which I'm sure you've all bandied about for the last several months in establishing this. So I personally am fine with the one-year idea and, you know, to Mr. Mullins' point or to Mr. Penny's point, wherever you want to put me is fine. Wherever you feel I can be the most effective for you folks, I was on the previous committee for almost 10 years. Be the longest relationship I ever have, so...
You were on Charter Maintenance, so I don't see why we wouldn't put him back on there.
Thank you. Yeah, again, wherever you feel I'm the most effective for what you guys, for what you folks need.
Yeah, I have a problem with appointing you for seven years if you want to. My concern is appointing someone for seven years and they don't know.
I suppose we could make the appointments tonight, and they could resign from that position, and we could go that route. But for sake of establishing the committee tonight, we can make those appointments, and knowing that we can definitely rope Jared in.
I guess the only question I have, joining this and being a part of it before, how will the ad hoc committee work functionally with the separate Charter Maintenance?
They will be as one.
They will exist as one.
For this, for this exercise, those nine are going to be equal as one. Yeah.
Because I'll be, I'll feel silly sitting on a seven-year committee, kind of, you know, what are we doing when there's an ad hoc committee kind of taking the lead?
The nine are going to be equal to do this, and then obviously, once, once the charter is done and it's ready to be presented, then at that point, the Charter Maintenance would then, those three members would continue, but hopefully with a new charter in place.
Well, I would imagine, just like we did when we hired Doug, we had a committee look at, you know, everybody looked at it, interviewed, did all the work, and then at the end, you present.
Yeah. I mean, the first time, the first time I did it, I spent a lot of time researching town charters up and down Plymouth County, like-sized towns to Rockland, so, you know, Western Mass and other parts of the Commonwealth, and really figuring out what are some of the best practices that we're doing, that other communities are doing that we're not doing that, seemed like no brainers in a lot of ways, which I know in talking to some of you folks up there about what you have in mind and your goals for this, are goals that I had had in mind previously several years ago.
Remember that town meeting, though?
Yes, it was great. I remember it too very well, too.
A warning for punishment, huh?
I know. First of many defeats, anyway. The, but to that overall point, I mean, that's the thing, you're going to find and do the research and figure out, you know, thankfully, not to my own, I at least have some bit of a memory of what we have or what we did on the previous committee, and frankly, back then, the town didn't have an appetite for that change. Hopefully, that change exists. I think the best thing that we can do as a committee going forward will eventually be, this is what we think will work best to maximize efficiencies within this building, within other departments, that other towns do already, which seem like no brainers, so...
Sold.
I'll go to second Mr. Mullins' choices.
And I think with that caveat, though, to that point, maybe Richard...
So if somebody doesn't want to, they can...
Yeah, they can re-sign, and somebody on the other group can step up if they decide to do so. So in the, you know, for the purposes of the motion and for Doug's minutes, Jared and Pierce McNally as Charter Maintenance and Greg Kelly as ad hoc. Is that the motion, Mike?
Yeah, that's the motion.
Yep.
Rich, did you want to talk about Pierce? Because I think that's like a really cool thing that he's...
So I certainly can talk about Pierce. So Pierce McNally is someone that I've known for probably about 10 years. Graduate from Rockland High School just over four years ago, currently attends Northeastern University, will graduate, I believe, this coming December. Poly-sci major in philosophy, I think it is. It's a capstone project that's going on right now, has to do with town charters. And, you know, someone that I, like I said, I've known for a while and really, as I've talked to him recently, really wants to give back to the town that he's grown up in, and I think with his background, I think he'll be a valuable member. He's actually worked on three charters already as a 22-year-old kid, so, or a 22-year-old man at this point. So, yeah, I'm just excited that someone 22 wants to be a part of it.
And actually, technically, he did apply for Charter Maintenance Committee.
He did. He absolutely did.
So...
Just in now.
And then the third candidate, the third person, Greg Kelly, lives at 147 French Road. Him and his wife have been residents for over 25 years, and he's got a Bachelor's in Science in Management from UMass Boston, and he's a network engineer for the Commonwealth for the last 27 years. So I think all three will be good additions to this committee, and I'm excited for us to get this whole process started. It's long, long, long overdue, and I believe I have a first and a second.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
The only thing I'll say is, I believe, looking at this committee, it's, I think, going to be another very strong committee that we have recently put together, and I think the encouraging part for me, I believe there are four individuals, I believe there are four individuals that this will be their first foray into working with the town in a committee. So we continue to see residents that in the past have not been a part of the process step up, and the last thing I can say is, for those that feel that change can't be made, change can't be made unless you actually step up and make the changes happen, and we are seeing it time and time again over the last year. So I encourage anyone in town that really wants to see a change, step up, because we have multiple openings on different committees, and it really makes a difference.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. Well said. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Step up again. We like a guy who can take a punch.
I think I owe him, I think I owe him dinner now.
There you go. That's what we're all doing here.
It's his birthday, he's going to talk all night.
There you go.
So I just wanted to suggest that this makes sense to you. I think I should help set up the first meeting.
I agree.
And that way, I could, they can then organize, they can elect a chair and, you know, set their own schedule after that. And then I thought it would also be helpful if I brought in the Mass Managers Association, their former government committee, we talked about earlier, they'll come in for free, give some free advice, input, you know, they'll look at the charter ahead of time, just give them some, some, some input. And I think it also makes sense to have Town Council come in to one of their early meetings as well, just to help guide them. And then as they meet, they can kind of figure out if they think they need to tap into that resource of hiring a consultant, or if, between the MMMA and Town Council and themselves and public input, if that's enough, we can see what they think. But if that's all right with you, I'll kind of get it jump-started?
Absolutely. That all makes sense.
All right, great.
Actually, can I also ask that, for the next meeting, if you could bring a list of the open seats on all the other committees, board and committees within the town?
Sure.
I'm sure, Don, I can just provide that for you?
Yeah.
And that way, we can kind of put that out there into the atmosphere?
Yeah.
All right.
Excellent.
Okay. Next on the agenda, open warrant for December 2nd, 2019, special town meeting. So as we decided at the last, last meeting, we were going to hold a special town meeting for the purpose of the school building project. We're going to hold it for December 2nd, Monday, December 2nd, at 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM in the high school auditorium.
In the high school auditorium. So entertain a motion to open the warrant, which would have to be open for, what, two weeks on? Or actually, as long as we want.
One week.
Yeah, at least a week.
At least a week, yep. Okay, so entertain a motion to open the warrant.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay. Doug, any other business?
Yeah, I think on, on that item, you know, as, I was reading the charter and as we, as we've discussed in Rockland, it's, it's an interesting part of the town charter that for a special town meeting, the majority of your board has to vote a resolution clearly stating the emergency nature of the situation prompting the order, and I've talked to Rich about this quite a bit. Personally, I think the simplest way for you to explain the nature of the emergency is, because of the timing with the MSBA, having a special town meeting will enable us to capture over $35 million of state reimbursement. And if you wait, if you wait until the annual town meeting, you'll miss that opportunity. And Rich knows more of the details than me, but to me, $35 million is 35 million reasons right there.
Yes, it is.
So I would suggest that might be a good subject of your resolution for the nature of the emergency, you can just get it out of the way that way, if you'd like.
Okay.
Yeah, no...
You could vote that now if you wanted.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion on the emergency resolution, because of timing.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
I want that one.
Carrie, you do win that one, yeah. It's his birthday, that's your present. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, moving on. Number five, Town Administrators' Report and Correspondence. Mr. Lapp.
Thank you. A couple of things I thought I would mention for you tonight. One of them is, I've been working with the library director to make some of the improvements that need to be done there. I had a meeting the other day, and people in the audience were with me as well. I think the most immediate thing you're going to see is, on the ground floor, we're going to get the carpet that's been removed a long time ago because of the water leak, we're going to get that replaced, fix the drywall, put the shelves back up, put in the baseboard and paint it. So we're working on getting that done quickly, so I'm hopeful within the next few weeks that will be done. We had a staff cookout, sort of a team-building exercise, last Thursday afternoon after work. I was pleased with that for the first, you know, the first time running. I thought it was, I thought it was a nice event, we beat the rain, so that was good. So I'm going to try to do something like that annually for all the town staff. Some of you may have seen in the news that National Grid hosted live wire training at our highway department. So that was actually a regional training for all the surrounding towns, and it was fascinating. I put a couple of pictures up on Twitter where they had this mobile, this mobile trailer where they had transformers and, you know, a generator simulating a power station and just highlighting what happens if a squirrel hits a line, or if a, if a ladder touches or a boot touches, you know, something energized, and it's just, it was just staggering. And so it was really helpful. We appreciate National Grid providing that opportunity. And, you know, we had staff from, you know, water department, sewer department, highway department, you know, making sure that people know what to do and to be safe. And the main lesson to be learned for the public is, oh, if there's ever a wire down, always assume it's energized, until somebody's out there and can prove that it's not. I was going to just briefly mention that the Master Plan Committee had a community meeting last night, and Rich was there, you probably want to speak to him more maybe when you get to your remarks, so I won't, I won't steal your thunder, but that was helpful. As we talked about earlier, we are working on issuing a request for qualifications to hire an architect to do the feasibility study for the McKinley School. The funding was appropriated at the last annual town meeting. So I'm working with the building inspector, one of the commissioners from the Parks Department, the Parks Commission, Rich Furlong, from the Youth Commission, Gene Blaney, Jen, the Assistant Town Administrator, and Jane Hackett from the schools, because the schools do use the community center as well. So we've already started meeting, and I have sort of an aggressive timeline on that. I hope to have the RFQ issued by Wednesday, the 9th, and have responses due by the end of October. So, you know, later this fall, early this winter, we can get it started.
Doug, can I make a recommendation? When, when you get in those documents, you might want to have Mark Shum as part of reviewing those documents?
Sure.
Just because of his background, he'll, it makes sense to him that doesn't to most of us?
Yep, no, that's a good idea. I will definitely include him. Thank you. I've also prepared a budget calendar. I went over this earlier with, with Mike Lauflin. Maybe I'll hand that out at the end, so I don't have to get up and sit down. But I have prepared a budget calendar for this upcoming year, which I thought I'd share with you. I'm not sure if in the past, that's always been done in writing, but for me, it's helpful, just so I know what my milestones are and if I'm, you know, know that I'm staying on track. So I'll hand that out in a moment. Last two things real quick. One was, I attended a South Shore manager, so all the town managers, administrators from the South Shore region gets together, gets together once a quarter, and we had a meeting last week at Bridgewater State. And it was really interesting, and what we learned a lot from Bridgewater State was they presented a lot of opportunities for internships from both undergrad and grad students in their public administration program. So I think there's some real opportunities there for us. So we're going to look at potentially getting some undergraduate or graduate student interns that can help us with some various projects here. And for us, certainly, the price will be right, because the school will be paying them a stipend, not us.
Sure.
So that, that's exciting. And then the last minor thing I wanted to mention was, I did sign myself up for the Mass Managers Association, the Fall Conference in Gloucester. It's two days in November, November 21st and 22nd, so I wanted to let you know about that. And I'll just hand out the budget calendar I put together, and if you have any questions on that, talk about it now, another time, just shoot me a note, and I'm happy to revise And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Donna Cowton is in the room, and maybe she'd just like to say hello and, and let people know that she's...
Oh, she looks happy that you just called her out.
I think it's important that you get recognized on occasion, so that people know that, you know, you're here and, and what you look like and who you are. And you're doing a great job, from what I understand, and, and quite frankly, the whole team is, and we appreciate the work you're doing. You know, it's not easy to come into a new place and deal with all new people and all new techniques, if you will, but I'm sure you'll get the work done, you're doing a fine job.
And this is, this is certainly the last selectmen's meeting you'll show up to.
I thought...
This is the last selectmen's meeting that you'll show up to, seeing as you've got to put on the spot.
I was just going to say, she's been to almost every one. We're not going to see her anymore now that you called her out.
Until, until she's on the agenda, she won't be there.
I think it's good that she comes, actually.
All right. On to, number six, Selectmen's Comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen, and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Got to switch it up a little bit tonight. Ms. Nyman.
God, I don't think I have anything right now.
Mr. Mullen, I'm sure you have stuff.
No, none.
What?
I just want to move on, so, so take note, Mr. Penny.
Mr. Penny.
Wow. Pressure. So first, I want to say happy birthday to Mr. Larry Ryan.
Yeah.
So...
Still my kind of...
Don't forget who the first one was.
There you go. That's right.
So he's 29 again, so happy birthday. The, the master plan, Doug had talked about that. We've got that underway a little over a month ago. We had a, a community engagement event last night, and it was very encouraging. 35, 40 residents, somewhere around there. For the very first engagement, I thought that was great participation. It was a hands-on event where they actually were asking the residents for their input, actually going around to different stations where they could actually talk about their thoughts, write them down. So I thought it was, it was very, very encouraging. I do think that people misunderstand what a master plan is. It is directional for the town. And it's only as good as the implementation after the master plan is done. So it's just a, it's, it's a roadwork or guide to where the town, but more importantly, truly where the residents want to see their town. You know, this, this is not an event designed for the Board of Selectmen or from finance or whatever. This whole process is very much for the townspeople. So I encourage the townspeople to come out. It's your town, it's our town. So, so have your input, so we can put together a thorough master plan and have the blueprints for it, and then kind of hopefully, we can, we can move forward on it. The other thing is school building project. So that's been going on for two years? It's been a while. But we hit a tremendous milestone yesterday. We had a meeting at MSBA, and we, we were getting our, our final numbers from MSBA, and we found out that our reimbursement rate has jumped up to 67.08% of the allowable reimbursements. All right? So not everything in the project is covered. So they have some guidelines. They only cover up to a certain amount of dollars per square foot for a build-out. They only cover so much for landscaping outside the building. But what that equates to is just over $35 million of state funds that will be available to the town of Rockland if the residents so choose to build a new elementary school. To give you an idea, town next to us, Weymouth, their reimbursement rate is roughly 10% less than what, what we are getting as a town. Throughout the Commonwealth, the average reimbursement is under 50%. So to get 67% is tremendous. The overall budget for the construction is just under $86 million, it's about $85.8 million. So, you know, doing the numbers, we as a community will be responsible for about $50 million of it. And that's where I want to get back to, you know, the reimbursement rate's at 67%. But like I said, not everything is eligible for the reimbursement. But it was a, a tremendous meeting. The other part that kind of solidified the project managers and the architects. So there are three projects that are looking to be approved on October 30th. As we're sitting with the MSBA, our meeting was half the time of the other two towns. They told us we were the only town with no hiccups. Everything that we did has been by the book tremendous. They didn't have any questions. So that's indicative to the team that we chose, both from an architect and from a project management standpoint. So it's encouraging news. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Penny. Mr. Ryan?
This weekend, we were, my wife and I were fortunate enough to go to a testimonial for the commander of the VFW, the new commander of the VFW, who just happens to be Jeff Negerian, a Rockland resident. Him and his wife, Mary, were feted and honored, and given quite a banquet with testimonials up in Leamster over the weekend. Claire Payne was there, one of our veteran reps, and, and of course, Vinnie Fontaine, Fontaine was there also. And I just want to say that I spoke to a number of the participants up there, and they are very happy, I guess, with our people, that they do a lot of work. I, I had to, had to give a little bit of a presentation from the town, and, you know, I said to the people that I thought that the, the single word that used for Jeff would be the word asset, because quite frankly, he is an asset to all the VFW and to all the veterans that he's helped over the years. And they spoke well of him, they spoke well of Vinnie, and they spoke well of Claire. They all love Claire, she's a little doll. And I was proud to be here, say I was from Rockland and say I was there to represent them, and, and quite frankly, I use that term again, and I wish I didn't, but I do. They were happy that I was there to make a presentation from the town, because it's important that the town of Rockland gets recognized for the people that serve here and are standouts in their divisions statewide and whatever. So, but to Jeff, thank you very much for all the work you're doing. Congratulations, and that's a long way to stop it.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Okay, I don't have much. I do want to thank Mr. Penny for his leadership of the school building project as chairman of that committee. To your point about being organized and having your ducks in a row, that's, that's generally at the top, so excellent job in getting us a best deal possible. So thank you for that. To the rest of the board, I do want to thank you guys for the work on the Charter of Maintenance and the ad hoc committee. It wasn't, it wasn't easy, and it's been, you know, obviously, a little time-consuming, and we've had to reach out to some people and, and really, you know, push and pull. Fortunately, a lot of the people that applied to this committee are actually on this committee, at one point or another, they had applied for the committee to actually hire you, Doug, to be on the Town Administrators' Search Committee. I'm sure, I'm sure. So, I mean, who's to say if they run that committee, but, you know, we won't go there. So they, you know, we thought as a board that if you have people that are willing, find something for them. So, you know, several of us reached out to these members and we, we said, you know, we didn't take you for this, but we have this for you, you know? So, so I think it's great that we can finally get this off the ground. I think it's of the utmost importance for the town, and I think we all, we all know why. We saw some things that were really out of our control over the last couple of years, and I think if we had a stronger, more detailed charter, we'd be in a much different position. Not to say we're in a bad place today, but, you know, some of the things, you know, we would have been as painful as it was at times. And lastly, I want to echo Mr. Penny's sentiments and wish my friend and colleague, Mr. Ryan, a happy, what am I?
29th.
29th. 29th birthday.
Just beginning my 70th year.
Okay, all right. Happy birthday, Larry, and...
A lot older than I look.
Okay. All right. So with that, with that, I have no other, I have no other comments, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn and go into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation strategy as it pertains to national opioid litigation.
Motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
And not to reconvene.
And myself, and not to reconvene, add to the motion. Thank you. All right, thank you, good night.
Thank you.